On this computer. All right, good, we're recording. Hi, everybody. Welcome to the Zoom Town Hall hosted by the Regathering Task Force. And glad that you are all here. I am going to go ahead and mute myself and kick it over to Rob.
Thank you, everybody. Happy that we could get this much turnout this morning. And want to encourage this to be a town hall and for us to hear all of your voices. I'll talk a little bit about how much the task force itself has got together and talked about all of the issues facing us. But it is very important that we hear from you and hear your concerns and questions. I want to start off this morning by acknowledging all the members of the task force. This group was selected by the wardens and the clergy. I think everybody is online and if they can unmute themselves and say hello. We will lead, of course, with Tim and our two wardens, Deb and Tom. I saw both of them on. We also have on the task force Vestry member Kirsten Moore, who is trained as a lawyer, who has been very valuable in all of those regards. Dr. Erin Nay is also on the task force, trained as a physician and currently working at Bain Consulting. Brenna Rogers has been really valuable in bringing not only the local community aspect, but her experience in social work and the local regulatory environment, what the state is thinking. That has been very important for us. And finally, I'll acknowledge Andrew Turner, who brings his insight from his corporate management experience and really the broader context that we are all facing in this transition. I want to go back briefly to our guiding principles that we set out on May 18th to all of you in an email. And briefly, we led with the fact that safety is our number one job here. We know that there are a lot of emotions involved in this, but we are going to stay focused on the safety of all of us as a community.
Yeah.
Oh, this is.
We are going to be informed by regulations and guidelines from the state and the diocese, but we are going to be making our own decisions that reflect the benefit really of specifically for St. John's. Just got a note that I am muted, but I don't think I am. We have no specific timeframe. And for those of you who are tuning in this morning, hoping to hear a date, I'm sorry, but you're not. And we are going to continue to be patient. But we have no specific timeframe for return as we are going to learn with all of us. We're going to learn and adapt. And one of the phrases you hear a lot is that this is a nonlinear journey. We have seen that really come very true in the national trends and the rise in different hotspots. This is going to be ups and downs, and we're going to have to deal with that. We are going to be as transparent to the parish as we possibly can. And this is another step this morning in doing that. We have a new normal that will emerge, and we acknowledge that change is hard. One of the diocese's principles that they've stated is that we will never return to the way things were before this. And I think that that remains true. And finally, we must maintain our online community because it is grown so important to all of us that anything we do must acknowledge both the in-person and the virtual environment that we've created. A few comments on the task force itself. We convened very quickly, I think, back in April. We've been meeting weekly and staying informed as a group. We have been making, having specific conversations and making recommendations to the Vestry. Two that hit particularly close to this household are things like Summerfest and Be Safe. And I want to thank all of you who were innovative and were able to have a very successful Be Safe campaign. It was unlike any others, but this group has been working closely on that. We continue to align with the diocese and learn from them. We are working with a gentleman, Canon Bill Parnell, who is the Canon for the Ordinary, which is a very fancy way of saying that he is the bishop's right-hand man. He is very engaged in all of the regathering that we are doing. And from that perspective, we as a group are very lucky to have the relationship with Bill that we do. And then finally, we're working hard to communicate to all of you, whether it is town halls like this or the emails that we put out. I want to comment a little bit about our specific environment at St. John's. And note that we all recognize that we are specifically challenged at St. John's, even compared to other parishes. We love our church, but we have a small, old church with no side aisles and limited HVAC. We have a very vibrant parish, and we typically pack our church, which is awesome, but it makes social distancing a challenge. We have a very strong church school, and we have appropriately active young parishioners who we absolutely want to be part of our community. And we are blessed with many older parishioners that are at higher risk than others. I will say also with specific to our environment, I want to reinforce how fortunate we are with our talented clergy and parishioners. And Tim called out Dan Fickers this morning, that can provide such a professional experience. We have coined, and I want to thank Charlie Hayes for coming up with the word "verge", which is, we have a terrific verge environment going on right now. And it has been awesome to be a part of that. Emphatically, we will say again and again that the church is not closed. This is not a reopening of the church. This is a regathering of the church, and we are not closed. We want to acknowledge that change is hard, and we are all grieving with these imposed changes. Tim said this morning that this is frustrating and scary, and it absolutely is. We, as a task force, are grieving with you. We are trying to stay focused on the data and the safety, but we understand the challenges emotionally that come with us. And then finally, we want to do this as one community. Love thy neighbor has been a very important part of our perspective here. And when we do undertake activities, we want to be conscious of not excluding parts of our community, whether actively or passively. And we've talked about that a lot, as how and when we will regather. So where do we find ourselves currently? There are four stages to the diocese designated journey. Unlike, if you listen to our governor and track that, we are still in stage one, which is stay at home. And we are contemplating stage two, which is called cautious. Stage two brings several important restrictions. There is no parish-wide singing. There is no communion. There is no physical exchange of the peace. We would operate at a 40% capacity cap. And all of that would be a very different experience for us, which we'll talk a little bit about. Now, we will acknowledge here and say out loud that we know that there are some parishes in the diocese that are currently actively pursuing this. So we know that you will hear, if you haven't already, that there are other parishes who are more actively pursuing stage two. We are not at this point, and we will talk a little bit more about that. The depth and the seriousness with which the diocese is approaching phase two is very evident in the fact that there is a 30-page checklist of items that need to be addressed by the task force and by the clergy and by the Vestry for us to go into phase two. A very small sampling of those 30 pages include: We have to have consultation and approval with our insurance carriers. We need to develop a bathroom use plan. We need a seating and flow plan for the entire building. We need to obtain adequate cleaning supplies. We need to remove all hymnals and prayer books. We need to do usher training and allow enforcement on the social distancing. We need to adopt CDC guidelines for disinfecting the church after each use. And we need to institute an online signup for the church to manage capacity and to do contact tracing. Okay? All of those things are required for us to venture into stage two. And all of them present challenges at this point for us as a community in what we are going to undertake. So what does this all mean? Today, I can tell you that the task force will continue to meet, and we will learn with all of you and link directly to the diocese on the policies and the learnings going forward. The task force is also committed to working hard in the background to prepare us for an eventual unspecified transition to stage two, including the long lead time items, like, we don't even know if we can buy adequate cleaning supplies at this point. There is a high demand. We don't even know if we can obtain them. But the task force is committed to working on that. Okay? What I can tell you is that the current environment that we're operating in now is likely to continue until we can achieve broader immunity. Whether that is through a vaccination or whether that is through acquired immunity, which I will point out, that we still don't understand it globally. We don't understand it. We don't understand what antibodies mean yet. We don't know if the virus is mutating. We don't understand that globally, and that's going to be a challenge for us. Okay? The fall will not be typical, and it will likely be unfulfilling for all of us who seek a return to normal. And that includes things like Homecoming Sunday. It includes things like Not So Spooky Haunted House, and it includes things like the Holiday Boutique. We do not have specific announcements this morning in this regard, but I just want to set expectations for everybody. I want to open it up for questions now, and I want to lead with two questions that I have received on behalf of the task force. Number one, there was a question about nursery care. And here, I want to acknowledge the specific challenges of nursery care and say that as we contemplate entering stage two, the diocese does not allow nursery care until stage four. That is the last stage of New Normal. So it will be some time before we have nursery care again at the church. The other one for us that we talk a lot about at the task force is, why can't we do outdoor worship? And for us, it is continuing to balance the trade-offs of what that would provide. Yes, it would absolutely be great for us to gather on the grass and see each other. But I emphasize the word "see" because that's all that we would be allowed to do. Okay? We would still have to enforce social distancing. We would still have to worry about capacity. We would still have to manage activities of all the parishioners in order to keep everybody safe. And we, as a task force, will continue to look at whether the required guardrails on that are worth the risks. And at this point, we don't think they are. Okay? I welcome any comments from my fellow task force members, and I would love to hear from them and hear from all of you. And if you need Tim to unmute you, raise your hand, and we'll do the best we can on that basis. Thank you for your questions or comments. We want this to be a town hall. I'm listening.
I just want to pipe in and thank everybody who's here and to thank our task force and just to tell people there is a chat feature on the right. If you go down to the bottom of your screen, you'll see a little speech bubble that says chat. And if you click on that, a little white screen opens up to the right of your meeting where you see everybody. And there's a question there already, and you can post questions there or comments right there.
And I'd also just want to say, in addition to childcare being in the last phase of the diocese and guidelines, so is Sunday School. So it's safe to say that we're going to be, I mean, we're not making formal announcements yet about this, but it's safe to say that there won't be in-person Sunday School this fall. And that's painful. It's hard. I so grieve for that. But still, we are going to be doing some creative things, whether it's Children's Chapel. We've done some of that, whether it's Zoom Sunday School, whether it is online lessons. And Margaret and Jackie have been doing an amazing job with that this summer. And I gave a shout-out during the announcements to Matthew's Be Attitudes video today. It's just, there are some creative opportunities for that as well.
So thank you for your chat comments, and I will do the best I can and ask others to chime in here. So one question is, if stage two is too difficult to manage, is it possible to wait and skip straight to stage three or four when they are appropriate? The answer, I think, is kind of. We may choose to not meet during stage two, but all of the preparations and requirements of stage two will be cumulatively requirement for stage three and four. So we, as a parish, have to pass through stage two. Whether or not we choose to gather together without singing and without communion, I think is a decision that we will come to. But we must pass through the 30-page checklist. That is not optional. Okay?
I love Jennifer's question here. I would love to hear more about ideas that people have for enriching our virtual connections. We are, you know, we've tried all sorts of different things to keep the community connected and together with online worship and social media stuff and videos. And I would love to hear any ideas that anybody has about other ways to do this. Please send them to me. You know, let me know what really resonates, what you'd like to see. And also, creativity is one of the blessings of this time, and thinking outside the box is one of the blessings of this time. And I would also encourage, share ideas, but also if there are things that you would like to try, just run with it. But I would love to hear any ideas that people have.
Well, and I'll just echo what I kind of said in the comment box about how can, given that we have, I mean, we've come into this acceptance of the change in our world, and how can we continue to enhance what we're doing? And, you know, for my children, we try to be active in the activities, and they have done a really nice job coming up with different ways to engage. But oftentimes, my children are one of two calling in. And it's kind of awkward sometimes because there is an engagement from other families, you know, specifically to this topic. And then, so what are the other families doing? Are they just saying, well, hey, I'm on vacation? And from church, and it's summer, you know, but this was still true somewhat during the school year. And so there is kind of an awkwardness when you're the one of two or one of the only ones. And so it's kind of, but, you know, we still participate, and we are enriched by the connection. And so, you know, I think it's finding the things that are meaningful for, you know, different groups of people. But I guess I just didn't want to lose sight of that. And yes, we have a lot of preparation to do to get back to some other new way of worshiping. But along the way, we'll probably find other things that we can do that could connect our community.
And Jennifer, to the flip side of that, in the spring before they broke for the summer, the middle school youth group had 20 or 30 or more kids every single Sunday. And it was just a remarkable lifeline for our daughter and something that, where there are applicable learnings, will be good to look at for the fall. I also just wanted to throw in there for community building. Where there's opportunity for virtual foyer groups and continuing that, I think that could be really valuable because it's an opt-in, and it creates smaller groups of community. I think about, you know, we did a game night with our foyer group this spring, or the dinner we did for, we participated in, it wasn't foyer group, but for Monday Thursday, and how special that was. It just brought members of the parish together in very intentional ways, which I think is going to be necessary.
Somebody may want to, along with Kaya's comments, talk about the youth camp, the youth camp that Jack just ran that included 25 of our youth.
Yeah, I can speak about that. Hi, everyone. My name's Andrew. Yeah, so Jack put together a racial justice organizing camp. It went on about two weeks ago. It was a kickoff on Sunday for two, two and a half hours, and then nightly, Monday through Thursday, for almost two hours, culminating with a call. In our case, I joined our middle school and high school students to contact State Senator Patrick O'Connor, and it was wonderful. I mean, it brought together, I have a future, a number of other social justice organizations. There was great participation. I certainly got to know the youth a lot better and was incredibly impressed with them. And it was just another one of those examples where, though it wasn't Sunday worship, it wasn't Sunday School, it wasn't middle school youth group, it certainly was enriching. It was faith-based, and it was just wonderful. It's too bad Jack's not here. She's on a well-deserved vacation, but it was just a great experience.
This is Brenna. I want to, I think more around that is, you know, for a lot of people, there is Zoom fatigue. And so I'm wondering if there's a difference in the age group of the children who are not as participatory that you're finding? Because then we can sort of hone in on what is the roadblock around that participation. You know, I don't know what the age group is that you're addressing, Jennifer. Are there younger children? Because sometimes that can be more of an issue with utilizing the virtual platform as opposed to being able to be in person. But it's something that we should know and dig a little deeper into to try to address, increase the participation.
Thank you. So a couple of other questions that I will pull up here. Weddings, funerals, or baptisms, even if these gatherings are family-only, there are specific guidelines for these provisions within stage two. Because we're not in stage two or contemplating going there, we haven't contemplated that. My sense is that that would be very much guided by all of the restrictions that we have at this point and would require us to do a, you know, to meet the requirements of stage two for us to undertake those in the parish hall itself or indoors. Tim, is that your?
Yeah, I think that's right. And I, I mean, the pastoral issues are in some ways the hardest. And I will say that I will do everything that I can do pastorally. The indoor worship is still, we'd still have to go through these phases in order to do them. I have done a graveside, outdoor, socially-distanced burial and with, you know, 10, I guess 10 or fewer people or something like that. And we also have some services that were, that people are waiting, waiting to do. And that's, it's really hard. I know that Erin is also, Dr. Nay, who's on the task force, Erin is on a further task force of the diocese that is looking at things like, well, the sacramental pieces of communion and baptism and things like that. But I think that, I think the diocese is still in the process of figuring out the safety of that. I know that, you know, Eucharist, for one, we are in a very, we're in a fasting stage. We are all fasting from Eucharist. And from a spiritual perspective, that is really hard for a lot of people. And I get that. And I've heard, you know, there are all sorts of suggestions about, well, you know, could someone drive up and just get a wafer or, you know? But it's also, to me, it's also about the, what is Eucharist? What is communion? And how does it tie in to the community? And that's a really important thing for us to reflect on and to think about. You know, in some ways, I say that as a priest, the ability to celebrate the Eucharist is kind of like having a superpower that I can't do by myself. I can't do Eucharist just for me. It has to be with a community. And so we're waiting for that. And I'm getting a little bit off target there.
So another good question from Emily. Are singing and communion in stage three or stage four? Emily, there is bread-only communion in stage three, and socially-distanced parish singing is allowed in stage three. So the answer is that it will be incremental and gradual in both of those.
Yeah, and Perry's comment, yeah, Zoom is hard for our youngest parishioners. And it's one of the reasons that we started doing the Children's Chapel services at 9:30, kind of before our service, so at least people can watch. But Zoom is hard, online things are hard. And it is, you know, to Jennifer's point too, these are the kinds of things that, any thoughts that people have about what will engage children? I know that from our parish perspective, often it's the kids who love coming to Sunday School are the ones that get the parents out of bed to come to church. And that energy is, it's hard to translate that over the internet. And they're not, you know, I think Zoom can work at some level, but, you know, a parent, it's very directed by a parent, too. You can't just be like, oh, here, go log on, and I'll see you in 20 minutes. So it's, yeah, it's hard.
So there was a question here. What can you do to support the work of the task force? I think feedback is number one for us. We want to know what you all are thinking and the emotions that you're facing. We need to hear from you. I think we have a lot of good resources, both within the task force itself and our alliances with the diocese. But I think ongoing feedback and questions like this are really where we need your help. From Dale, Rob mentioned a 40% capacity issue. What measures is the task force looking to accomplish that? Will there be more services for Father Tim or volunteers to stay home and watch on Zoom? Great question, Dale. I think supply and demand will be very interesting for all of us to take part in. When we open the doors again for regathering, there will be some who will want to be first in line, and there will be others who will say, not yet for me. Thank you. in line and there will be others who will say, not yet for me, thank you. And we don't know where that is going to fall. One of the more awkward aspects of the requirements is that we do contact tracing and know who is attending. So as unnatural as it sounds, we may be in a position where there are online reservations to show up for a 10 o'clock service. Again, that's going to go under my large heading and big bucket of, this doesn't feel much like church. And we know that. But those are some of the conventions that are in place for us to balance that. But supply and demand will be very interesting for us to learn.
Yeah, and I'll, thanks, Rob. And I'll also say that I certainly, once we are able to regather in some form, there will be a hybrid model. And so we're going to be in a situation where there will be some people in church and some people watching from home. And some of that is going to be capacity and some of that is going to be dictated by individuals' comfort level in terms of returning. One of the things that we are investing in is some infrastructure in order to livestream for the duration. And so Tom Daley has been great in helping us with, with some of that. And we have a plan in place. And my intention is to livestream and to set something up so that we are livestreaming forever. And so even when there is this model where, yeah, we have a procession and people are coming in and some people are here, we will still be filming all of that and people can still watch that at home. And, you know, there, there are many advantages of that. I mean, it's certainly, I've seen this just in the, in the summer months here. You know, our attendance is actually up based on, based on number of viewers because people can tune in from, from their vacation place or, or whatever. But there will be, just so, so you know, we're, we're looking at a system that will allow us to livestream with, you know, quality and, and to do that for the, forever.
Couple of other questions here. Are you getting pressure to regather from many parishioners? I will say personally, and I've compared notes with the wardens and with Tim, there have not been a lot of voices in that regard. And we thank everyone for their patience. We do acknowledge however, that there are a lot of emotions here. And most of the calls and the challenges have been healthy and have been under the heading of, I miss the way it used to be, I miss seeing people. And we'd like to understand when we can do that again. There has not been a loud call for regathering, but again, we encourage and hope that we can hear from everybody in that regard. Maren, your comment on Facebook is perfect and that's the type of feedback that we need to improve our online offering. So that is very appropriate.
Yep, and I also, yeah, the Perry's comment about, I've been thinking a lot about this, especially as I had a couple Sundays off and was able to attend other online churches just to get a sense of what it's like to be a, a visitor or a newcomer at, at an online church. And I will say that pre-recorded service, I, I went to a pre-recorded service and I found it really isolating, actually. So I like the fact that we're able to, to still be live on Sunday morning even with some pre-recorded elements so that we can have other participation and it's not just, you know, staring at me or, or me and Jack. But I've been very aware of visitors and newcomers. It's, it's, it is fascinating to me to see that we actually have some, well, we have people tuning in from all over the country, sometimes the world, which is interesting. But, and we've also had some people who are in this community in, on the, on the South Shore who have started coming to St. John's online. I'm hoping that, that, that they will come. Some have, some have actually been incredibly faithful and have shown up for worship every single Sunday. Some have, have started contributing to the church. Some have actually reached out to me and Jack and, and started some conversations. So I do think that there is that. I do want to be much more intentional about newcomers and visitors. And I, I've thought about even doing a specific Zoom coffee hour just to invite people who have tuned in or, or who, who we don't know in person. One of the things about livestreaming that I love is that, you know, when you go to a church for the first time, it's really hard. One of the hardest things is to walk through the doors of a church for the first time as a visitor. Some of you may remember when you did that here or in other churches. And you don't know what you are going to expect or what the place, what the vibe is going to be like. With livestreaming, people actually can sit in their living room and see, get, get a peek into the life of the community. And if you have a community that you think is, is, is great, that's a good thing. And so it, it does allow people to kind of sit in a virtual back pew and check things out. And I, and I do think that we will be getting some, some, that we will see some new faces when we are able to regather. I also am aware of the fact that, that some people in our community are probably, this doesn't resonate and perhaps they've gotten out of the habit of coming to church and we may not see them. And, and that's going to be hard. I mean, we'd certainly reach out, but, you know, so there's, there's, there's pluses and minuses of all this stuff.
How are other Episcopal churches on the South Shore? Have you been talking with them about their experiences with their parishes and how they're planning to take this diocesan path to reopening? Are we, are we at risk of losing somebody to cohabit because they opened their doors after Labor Day?
I'll take my chances. No, I'm just kidding. Rob, do you want to say anything about that?
It's a good question. I do not have that perspective. Tim, I don't know what Sharon you've done across the community, but I guess here's, here's what I know. As I said in my comments, there are churches across the diocese that are pursuing stage two. We know that. And I've been on group calls with them. Within that, I have specifically asked the diocese if they can make us aware of numbers and churches and directions. And at this point, the diocese has declined and said that it's unlikely that we're going to get that information out of the diocese. They want to keep this on a parish-to-parish basis. Having said that, we are certainly empowered to reach out to other parishes and talk. I have not done that and I think that's a good suggestion for the task force.
Yeah, and there are, there are not many churches on the South Shore that are trying to rush this process. I know of one that is, that is trying to do this and it is a much smaller church. And again, Rob talked at the beginning a little bit about context. And there is, our, our context is tough. I mean, the churches that will do the best right now are small congregations in very large buildings. They could probably, you know, they could probably start regathering sooner rather than later. That is not our context. And so for a vibrant, large congregation in a, you know, in a relatively small space without side aisles, as Rob said, that's a, that's a tough, that's a tough one. So at one level, we are in, in about the toughest spot of, of any, of any church. And that's, that's hard.
Hi, Chrissy. What's up?
Just a couple of things. First, thank you. Thank you to, to everybody that's been trying to figure this all out. I've been pretty pleased with our online church, I have to say. It's, I mean, I've definitely intended church more this summer than I have in a lot of other years. I can look like this and this is why I never attend these Zoom coffee hours with y'all because I usually don't look all that presentable. But, um, yeah, I, I think the connection's been great. Is it ideal? Of course not. But nothing is normal right now. And I can see and feel how much you guys are doing to try to make the best of this situation and I appreciate that. I love that things have changed up a little bit. I love seeing the choir and Buffy when that got added in. So I think it's great to think outside the box. Like you said, everybody take five minutes and send an email or whatever you, you know, you suggest, Rob, to start to think of more creative ways that we can make this more meaningful. I know myself, I'm, it's probably not a popular opinion. I'm not going to do a whole lot of anything until I feel more safe. And I feel that way with school too. And it's less about me and my family because knock on wood, we'd probably be okay, but there's a lot of others that, there's just too many unknowns for me. And, you know, the risks are just too big for what could go wrong. And so there's a lot of things being canceled for the first time in, you know, hundreds and hundreds of years. So I'm kind of willing to ride it out a little bit and, and wait till, I don't know if it's all the way to a vaccine, but I'm, you know, Massachusetts numbers are great, but all it takes is one big gathering and one person has it and then we're, you know, and then it just goes like wildfire. So I'm rambling, but I just want to thank you. I, I think that this has been a great way to stay connected week by week. Oh, I was going to say, maybe we could even think about, I know my comfort level's been okay with getting together with like maybe one other family or two, but outside and socially distant and we're not sharing food. You know, we've taken little steps like that. Let the kids see a few friends like that. Outside's better than inside when you look at all the risks. Maybe we can think about, Kaya mentioned the foyer dinners, maybe something, maybe a way to get together in person, but very small groups, not in an official church capacity. I don't know, just thinking out loud. But I appreciate everything everybody's been doing and this just S U C K S, no matter, you know, how you look at it. And God bless and thank you.
Thanks, Chrissy. Very well said.
One of the things that we've talked a lot about in the task force meetings is just also the, the whole worship experience and the whole concept of what, what feels more worshipful right now. And so does it, would it feel more worshipful to, to get together and have everybody in masks and, and not be able to sing and not be able to receive communion, but, and then, and have lots of anxiety about, you know, looking at people as, you know, and are they too close? Has this been sanitized versus being able to, to be in your, in your TV room right now and sing the hymn as loudly as you, as you want to and be comfortable? And, you know, it's, 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 it's hard. It's hard. But, but thinking, you know, you want worship to be renewing and refreshing rather than anxiety-producing.
Tim, do you want to talk about those parishioners that you've spoken to who are outside the scope of technology at this point?
Yeah, there are, that's, that from the beginning, this has always been the, the part that breaks my heart are, you know, we have a small, it's, and it is relatively small, but we have a small group of parishioners who are not on technology. And this is one of the things that the COVID response team has been very attentive to. And we have, we have reached out, well, we've reached out to, to everybody in the parish, but with the folks who are not, not on technology, I've certainly, Jack and I have, have reached out individually, calling them and that kind of thing. We've also a couple of times have sent sermons to them and things like that. But it's, yeah, I mean, not, there are different comfort levels with the technology. And some people are simply not, not connected in that way. And it's kind of a digital diaspora. And very, very concerned about them and just trying to, trying to reach out in, in the old-fashioned way like picking up the telephone.
I think also, Tim, just a reminder that we, that you did, we do have your, the services on local cable channels, right? For those who...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank, yeah, that, thank, thank you for mentioning that. Yeah, and I, and I told them all of that. So some people are, who are not on, on, online are, have cable TV. And so that was one of the things that, that we did is so we put them on, you can, you can watch it on the Hingham Public Access Station. Now, I cut out the, the pre-game show for that, but, but the rest of the services there.
You may have said this at the beginning, Rob, I'm sorry because we had to join a little bit late, but is the task force considering surveying the parish about their pastoral or community needs for the fall? Obviously not opening floodgates because this, these decisions cannot be made by large input, but where there are aspects where it would be valuable to hear from the parish or is that something that you're looking at?
Kaya, we have not spoken about a parish, about a survey, but I guess the, the themes that I'm reflecting on here are, this is, this is going to persist for a while. And it's an overused phrase, but this is the new normal. And I think the more feedback that we can get, the better. And if an online survey or reaching out to do specific demographics or populations or people would help, I think that's a great suggestion. As we are all adjusting to what this will be, I think we have to get more comfortable that this is going to persist for some time. And therefore, I don't think it's necessarily a survey on COVID or a survey on online. It is a healthy, it is a healthy engagement with the parish on what, what can help best. Deb?
I'm just, from the COVID response team side of things, this is something that we will be discussing. Sort of, we, our first mission was a quick gathering to sort of assess needs and to reach out to folks that was through the phone calls and the postcards. And I think our next meeting will be, what does this team look like going forward and how can we support our community? And, you know, I think we did talk perhaps about a short survey, just saying, what, you know, what do you anticipate your needs might be? And so that is, that is being thought of, looked at.
Great. Because they also, you know, as you've invited this group today, there may be some good suggestions based on people's experiences with other organizations or work that could contribute to the health of our parish, the health of, the spiritual health of our parish in these coming months where we can't rely on our more conventional ways of, of gathering and worshiping and, and retaining fellowship. Stan?
Hey, and speaking of health, you know, how are we doing financially? I mean, as somebody who owns their own business, I'm watching every single dollar go in and out. I mean, or is it coming in? Do we have enough to pay the bills? Are we worried? Are we ahead of the game? Can anybody address that?
Hey, Tom Piles, would you like to speak to that?
We've just closed out, thanks for the question, Dan. We've just closed out the first six months of the year. And as you can imagine, in February and early March, we, especially the finance committee was extremely concerned about the fact that expenses are not likely to go down any, but we were concerned about our revenues. One example is that there is no such thing as plate anymore. And every year we rely on plate revenue for a... And, um, every year we rely on plate revenue for a, a, a portion of our, uh, support of the expenses in the church. And with the economy being what it is, uh, and with the, with COVID, what it was, we were very concerned about the direction of giving. We sent out communications to the parish, uh, about the need to make sure that virtual plate continues and that, uh, pledge payments continue. Uh, the response in the second quarter has been unbelievably favorable. We hope it isn't gathering in from fourth quarter revenues, but, uh, we are, um, experiencing, um, giving that is at a par with, if not greater than last year and then expectations. So at this time, from a giving standpoint, we're in relatively good shape. You may know that we also applied for and received a part of the government's payroll protection plan. And, uh, we have, uh, gotten $85,000 from the government to support our efforts from a payroll and a utility standpoint, uh, most of which are, can be deemed as grants rather than a loan. So that it is permanent, uh, funds available for us in this current year. Uh, we have not relied on that, uh, from a budget standpoint, but it is there. We still have six months to go. Uh, we still may see that, uh, revenues may be off in the future. We don't expect expenses to get grant to grow. Uh, so at this point, we're cautiously optimistic about the financial prospects of the parish for 2020. Long way of saying, we're hopeful. Uh, we are going to be very, uh, anxious to see how our stewardship effort in the fall goes, which would be an indication of continual support and, um, how we are to frame our expenses for the following year. Was that, did anybody else have any questions on that or was that too much information, not enough information? Was that okay?
And I, I see that our parish treasurer is here.
I, I think that's Skip Hancock, but I don't reg, I, I think behind that beard.
It is. Um, I just wanted to say we have used the PPP funds for payroll and utilities. So that money has been used to, uh, defray costs and it's what it was designed for. And, uh, in using it that way, we hope to have it fully, um, fully granted. So we won't have to pay anything back.
Yeah. My, my point was, yeah, my point was that from a budgetary standpoint, we aren't literally considering that $85,000. We, we've used it, we will use it and it is a grant and hopefully we won't have to pay it back.
Yeah, that in conjunction with the reduced expenses has kept us on a fairly even keel. So, Tom, I agree a hundred percent, but, uh, you know, we're, we're in good shape. And, uh, I just wanted to make it clear that yes, we have used those funds to pay payroll and utilities. And I'm going to go hide in the corner again.
Our paper budget is way down. So there's that. But, um, I know we're, we're just, uh, just about out of time, but, um, uh, I, I did just want to thank all of you. Uh, this, this community has inspired me so much during this time. And, um, I just, it, uh, it's hard to articulate, um, just how much all of you mean to me and, and what you are doing to be the church. And we've, we've learned again and again, that as much as we love our, our church building and need to be good stewards of it and will continue to do that and will return to it eventually, this, this holy space is beautiful. And, and I can't wait until you are all here lifting all your voices in praise of, of God here again. You are, you are the church. This, the church is not a building and, um, and this, this community has been the church in some amazing, inspiring ways over the last few months. And I know that that will continue. So thank all of, I, I'm just grateful to all of you.
Amen.
Any, uh, any parting, parting words from anyone?
Everybody, I, I love the feedback this morning. Um, and, uh, as Maren has pointed out and as Kai has asked, we may get more structured in, um, how we solicit the feedback and, and hear from others. But at, at this point, um, we have not been overwhelmed with emails. Um, and please understand that whether to me or to Tim, they will be treated appropriately confidentially, but we love and need the feedback. Um, this is going to be longer than any of us, uh, would ever hope for. Um, and thank you for all the feedback, um, as you provide it.
Just one, one point. Uh, when we talk about, uh, reopening, uh, Tim often says that we've never been closed. As a wonderful example of that is, uh, what Chrissy and her team and so many other parishioners are doing from an outreach standpoint. Uh, this is a time when, um, the mission of the church certainly comes to the front. And the examples of all of the things that we're doing from an outreach, outreach standpoint, whether it's backpacking or camp or be safe, is just unbelievably vibrant and shows the, the strength and the health and the fact that we are open.
Well, may the Lord bless you and keep you and strengthen you. And the blessing of God Almighty, the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit be upon you and remain with you this day and forever. Amen. Thank you all very much. And thanks, Rob.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.